All right, let's move on to the next item, which is the report to us on the water boil incident. Andrew?
Mayor Council, as our presenters come up to the dais, just wanted to give a little bit of context for why we are back here today. Again, our community experienced historic flooding back in October, which resulted in high turbidity levels for our water system, and we wanted to take this opportunity to respond to the resolution that was passed on November 15th to assure both the council and the public on what information we have at this point in time. We are still conducting after-action reports. We're doing the corrective action report as well. I included at your spot the two memos that were distributed both on October 28th and on November 9th that described the flooding events, what our next steps will be, and the chronology of the different events that took place during that period of time. As you remember, we also had a briefing on November 13th during the work session to describe this event in more detail. I know that the main sponsor of this resolution, Councilmember Trox Player, is not with us this morning, but certainly we will be following up with her and her office to ensure that she has this information and is able to answer all the questions. The resolution itself did have this as the deadline for us to bring back to council more information, and so we're pleased to present that to you today. With that, our Director of Water, Greg Mizaras.
Thank you, Manager. Greg Mizaras, Director of Austin Water, and Rick Coronado, Assistant Director over Operations for Utility. So, just a little bit of kind of context to the presentation. So, the council resolution asked for a series of responses and data and analysis, and so today we're going to present this to you, but don't plan on going into a lot of detail on each slide. It's a lot of data, and we're, of course, available to answer questions or do some additional follow-up. We'll try to give you a sense of kind of what you're looking at and what some of the findings were, and then can take it from there. I would say, from a big-picture perspective, what I would have the council take away from today would be, first, that our water system is sound, that we have good infrastructure, we have high-quality staff managing the drinking water system, and we've handled hundreds of significant rain events in the past, will handle hundreds of more in the future without incident. Hopefully, we didn't lose any sleep over the weekend with the rains and the water system. Clearly, we had an unusual event with this Lano River flooding that we'll go into, but I just want you to have confidence that our water system is in good shape. We've put together, I think, a really excellent team to learn from this event, besides Austin Water staff. We've contracted with Corolo Engineering, they're national experts in water treatment. We've also contracted directly with Professors Lawler and Katz with the University of Texas Civil Engineering Program, again, national experts on water treatment. So, we think we have a really good team working in collaboration with Homeland Security Emergency Management to do a full after-action review. We're about six or seven weeks out from the event, and we've learned a lot already. We've already taken steps to incorporate that learning into reducing risk of this kind of an event happening in the future, and will certainly be taking other long-term steps as we complete our full after-action analysis. So, one of the questions we get with this event is, what was different? We've had flooding events before, and why was this flooding event different, and why did it disrupt the drinking water system? And so, this graphic maybe gives you some sense of the scale of the event. We went through, working with L.C.R.A. and others, and took a look at all the flooding events that occurred on the Highland Lakes, at least since Mansfield Dam was constructed in 1939. And to give you a sense of the scale of this Lano River flooding, and you can see the amount of flow to the far right there compared to other events over the last 80 years, you know, you kind of like have different ways of summing up this event in a memorable way. I did a little math with Wikipedia, and if you take Niagara Falls, the average flow over Niagara Falls, if you've ever been to Niagara Falls or seen it, this flooding event at its peak was equivalent to four and a half Niagara Falls. So, that's how much water was pouring into Lake Travis and carrying the debris and silt and everything with it. So, I think for me, you know, that was a memorable kind of statistic. You get a sense, this was not an everyday flood that we dealt with, by many measures the worst certainly we've ever experienced. And here's an image of that. This is water pouring over the Starkey Dam. A Starkey is the dam that impounds water for Marble Falls. This is water heading directly into Lake Travis. You can see just the amount of upset and flooding that occurred with that. Working with L.C.R.A., this flood had unusual behaviors. The amount of water, the temperature, the location, it drove the water deep into the water column and really acted like a wedge. It wedged out a lot of the water in Lake Travis. Just to give you an example of that, we've consulted with other utilities that draw water from Lake Travis. Lakeway Mud and Brushy Creek and the city of Jonestown are up in the shallower portions of the lake where the water kind of got wedged into, and they never experienced turbidities above about 20, where we were dealing with 400 NTUs of turbidity. So, you get a sense that this flood was really dynamic in the sense of its disrupting of Lake Travis and Lake Austin. Here's another picture of the amount of upset and turbidity from that lake. The lower picture, you may have seen this in the Statesman or on their website, that's Lady Bird Lake, and that's where Barton Creek joins Lady Bird Lake. You can see the amount of silt and turbidity that was flowing down the river system, and you can kind of see it piloting out into the flows of Barton Creek. An image you may have not have seen is up at the top. That is where the Colorado River System empties into Matagorda Bay, and you can see the siltation and turbidity that was flowing into the bay. You know, I think anytime you see the impacts of central Texas weather on satellites, it's a bad day for us. So, you get a sense of just how much silt was being carried by the river. This graphic is an analysis that we undertook as a part of the council resolution. The resolution asked us to go back over the last 10 years and summarize other turbidity events. We actually went back over about a little more than a 20-year period. We went through all of our regulatory reporting to T.C.Q. on turbidities throughout that period and mapped those events, the ones that provided some turbidity spiking. And you get a sense of the scale of this Lano River flooding. It's the red line there. You get a kind of perspective of how it compares to other events. The next quote-unquote "closest" event would be the 2010 Tropical Storm Hermione. You can see that spike in blue. You get a sense of this Lano River flooding turbidity spike, just dwarf that. I think some other qualities to this event was not only the level of turbidity, but also the duration. This event went on for a very long time at very high turbidities. Matter of fact, it isn't over yet. The turbidities have not returned to the baselines that were in place before this event started. So, we've never seen an event of this duration, and that was one of the challenges to us, is we couldn't wait it out. Often, you can kind of nurse your way through an event, the water quality will stable back down, and you're on your way, and this event did not behave like that in any way. I'm going to turn it over now to my Assistant Director, Rick Coronado, and Rick's going to go through some of the council resolution items associated with our treatment technologies and ages and facilities, and again, from kind of a summary perspective, and we won't dwell long on any one slide, but are certainly available to do so if necessary. Rick?
Thank you again. Greg, Rick Coronado with Austin Water, Assistant Director over Operations. What I'm going to kind of describe to you is a lot of the technical data that's related to the water treatment plant overview. So, we have in your table there, in your packet, is that we have a summary of the different water treatment plants, the first one being Hancock's Water Treatment Plant, formerly Water Treatment Plant Four, was built in 2014 with a capacity of 50 million gallons a day capacity. We have sedimentation basins. We have what we call two upflow design clarifiers with six dual-media filters and support under-drain. This is the plant that first was the installed technology for onsite chlorine generation. Aside from that, that was the unique disinfection process, different from the other treatment plants. And another thing to note is that Hancock's Water Treatment Plant is taking water from Lake Travis. The other two plants, Ulrich Water Treatment Plant and Davis Water Treatment Plant, take water from Lake Austin. And Ulrich was built in 1969 with a, over multiple expansions, can treat up to 167 million gallons a day. That also has a design of upflow clarifiers, seven of those, and also 18 dual-media filters similar to Plant Four with under-drain support. In 1994, both Davis and Ulrich introduced a recarbonation process that was to kind of help stabilize the softening process coming out of the treatment plants. Davis, one of our oldest facilities, but also a conventional lime softening process, was built in 1954 with multiple expansions and currently is rated at about 118 million gallons a day. It has the largest number of conventional basins, nine total, with 27 dual-media filters with gravel support. So, it's a little different filtration support system than the other two plants. And I mentioned again, the newest, the change in recarbonation occurred in 1994. Kind of to address some of the conditions is, all these plants are in operational condition. There are some that are undergoing some capital improvements. That includes the Davis Water Treatment Plant and the Ulrich Water Treatment Plant. The next slide kind of gives you an overview of some of the chemical processes or processes in general for treating surface water treatment. The first one being disinfection, which we currently use chlorine and ammonia to disinfect our water. That is intended to destroy or deactivate any pathogens or harmful bacteria and viruses in the water. The other is particle removal. So, those are two key elements or processes in the water treatment plants. For particle removal, we use a coagulant called ferric sulfate. So, if you describe coagulation, it's more the neutralizing of particles, kind of getting them sticky and connecting. As you move into flocculation, you get slower mixing, so that way some of the particles collide together, and eventually, they go into the phase of sedimentation, so they settle out. In cases like the event that occurred is sedimentation is difficult when you have hard-to-suspend or hard-to-settle particles, and we'll describe that a little more in detail. One unique thing, process for Austin Water Treatment Plant facilities is that we lime soften, soften by adding lime as measured in calcium oxide. So, the purpose being that it removes scale-forming minerals such as calcium, magnesium. And if you recall, the Green Water Treatment Plant, that was the first treatment plant that introduced lime softening to Austin Water, the city of Austin, in 1925. So, we've been lime softening for almost 100 years. The next slide kind of describes pictorially the chemical processes that are included in the water treatment plants. So, just to kind of describe this, a lot of those on the top that look like they're color-coded chemicals. So, the first one from the left side of the slide is carbon. Then, we have the disinfection of chlorine and ammonia. But kind of to describe the process, we start from the left side, and we kind of follow our way to the right, is we pull water from the lake and introduce it into, this is a pictorial depiction of what we call Ulrich Water Treatment Plant, and this is the upflow clarifier, just to kind of give you a sense of, you're pumping the water from the lake, and you're introducing it to the bottom of the basin. As the water enters the basin from the bottom, it exits the top in what we call a mixing well. That's a mixing zone where a lot of the chemicals kind of come together. Underneath the mixing well is what we call a flocculation zone. That's where we describe that as chemicals are added to neutralize the particles, they start to stick together and settle out. That is also described also in the settling zone. Most of the water that's settled out, that's already been kind of settled to the bottom of the basin, is not only is the sludge removed from the bottom, which is a critical part of the process, but the clear water is collected from the top of the basin. So, you call that the, what is described as the settled water collection zone or troughs. We have other processes or basins, such as the carbonation tanks or basins. We also add sodium hex, kind of another, sodium hexamethophosphate, also a stabilizer for the water. And then, we go into, this water now introduces into the top of filtration. So, water on top of the filters, which is dual-media, whether it's coal, anthracite, or sand, filters the particles. Water then now goes into what we call a clear well. It's an underground storage tank that is ready for pumping out into distribution after it's achieved its disinfection process of contact time with chlorine. So, this is really the, this graph is the multi-barrier approach to water treatment. So, everything from source water to sedimentation, coagulation, sedimentation, filtration, those are all barriers to our treatment process. Any one barrier that's compromised impacts the next barrier, and so that's what was described in the, kind of the water quality change that we have experienced and continue to experience, is that if the barriers are compromised, it just makes it a lot more difficult to kind of get to the next level. It kind of compromises those levels of barriers. So, some of the things I want you to keep in mind is that when we do select a treatment process, is the source water. The source water is a high consideration for what treatment process you'll have in your treatment plants, as well as some of the finished water goals, the regulatory requirements, customer expectations, and some of the distribution system goals that you may already have inherently having your system, such as, we have been softening for 100, just about 100 years, so our distribution system is scaled formed. So, we have to select processes that are compatible with the existing water quality in the distribution system.
So, yeah, I just want to pause there, because that's an important point. So, as we work through after-action and we think about changes to chemicals or maybe even treatment technologies in the future, and we have a lot of work to do there, but we have to be mindful that we have a 100-year-old distribution system that has been used to lime scale and lime softening for that entire period. That's what happened at Flint, is they changed very radically water quality and water sources, and we all know what happened at Flint. And I'm not saying that we're Flint or we're going to be Flint, but you have to be very thoughtful about process changes, so you don't destabilize your distribution system. And so, that's just a word of caution as we're working this through. That's going to be on our minds as we're thinking about additional after-action and chemical changes and the like, is that we not take steps that harm us in the long run as we're responding to this event.
So, Greg mentioned that we're working with a consultant to kind of help enhance our current treatment technologies based on the water quality experience and lessons learned. Initially, they provided us some kind of what we call jar testing, which is kind of a rapid test on treating water with different chemical dosages. In this case, we started treating the high turbidity water with polymer. So, we're still investigating some of the options that we may have in treating this type of high turbidity event in the future. Also, additionally, we'll continue to follow up with after-action reports and have peer review from some of the University of Texas professors. Keep in mind that, I keep mentioning that this was a turbidity event, but also, it was a water quality change event, and I'll describe that in a little more detail in one of the graphics I have. City Manager also described that you have received a October Boil Water Notification Timeline, which was presented on November 13th. I have added a graphic to that timeline to kind of describe some of the significant events that occurred over time. It is a very busy graph, so I've also included a large blow-up, 11 by 17, that kind of is the same timeline. It's towards the end of the packet. And I want to break it up into three timelines, one being pre-the-event and how conditions existed. But first, I want to kind of describe this graphic. This graphic consists of three major pins, all color-coded. The green describes a distribution system storage. So, that is the storage of water that we have in million gallons throughout the city. In addition to that, we have a production line, which is a blue line that kind of lays out how much water is leaving the treatment plants. In addition to that, I have another line that is in red, that is a calculated water usage. So, it's not a meter that accumulates all the water that's being used by customers. It's a calculated value that is between what is produced and what is stored, so that change kind of helps determine what the usage is in the entire system at any given hour. And so, that's what the data that you see in front of you is, data that was collected on an hourly basis, plotted over time to describe some of the things that we were seeing and the information that helped make decisions. Additionally, towards the bottom of the graph, you have a scale that says, on the right side, it says turbidity. We've described this as a turbidity event, but for the sake of description in this graph, I'm going to note that this is only for Ulrich Water Treatment Plant turbidity. That is about several hours after the first treatment plant, which was Hancock's, that experienced turbidity spike. Again, Ulrich Water Treatment Plant is at, is in Lake Austin, pulls water from Lake Austin, and Hancock's pulls from Lake Travis. So, there was about a 12-hour delay before Ulrich saw a turbidity spike. Another pin that's on here is rainfall, or at least information on rainfall data. In addition to that is water treatment plant shutdowns. So, that is also described as multiple shutdowns between Ulrich Water Treatment Plant and Hancock's Water Treatment Plant. That's also described during the timeline when those plants shut down. One of the things that, on this first set of information, is that we did not experience any storage issues. We didn't have any turbidity spikes, and this was even about at least a day to two days after the first Mansfield Dam's gates were opened. So, it took about two days before we started seeing the impact on turbidity at Ulrich and a little sooner at Hancock's. The next set of graphic is during the event. So, some of the things that were described in the outline memo were notification processes, the call for urgent water reduction, which was on Sunday. To back that up, on Saturday was the first event of plant shutdowns. So, Saturday afternoon was the first Ulrich shutdown, and Hancock shut down later that afternoon as well. Assessment was done during the day of Saturday to activate the Emergency Operations Center for the department, the DOC. That was early Sunday morning. That afternoon, it was made the decision to go ahead and request for reduction in the water. As we work through those operational periods, you can see the trend for the distribution and storage start to drop and continue to drop even after the request of reduction of water. And we've never experienced some of the storage levels that you see depicted on here, such as 39 million gallons of storage. Now, this is, I want to make sure that you understand, this is citywide, this is not in any one storage tank. So, we have hundreds of millions of gallons of storage, up to, say, about 170-plus. We don't operate at full capacity, but we do operate at a normal range, which is about 120, 130 million gallons of storage. And that's about a day's worth of storage, so long as you continue to maintain some production. With the plants shutting down, that was not, and most of those plant shutdowns were related to turbidity, not being able to meet the turbidity regulations or even our internal goals for turbidity. We had to lack some of those, some of those internal goals to continue to produce water. As you continue on through this graphic, we do start to recover, to start to bring on more plant capacity. Not only did the plant capacity assist, but also the call for reduction in water. So, you did see a trend in water reduction from the customers. So, that allowed us to not only recover in the distribution system, but also to kind of work through some of the issues as the high turbidity event starts to curtail. Finally, you have the last set of graphics where what I would call is the lifting of the boil water. However, that wasn't a complete recovery of our water treatment systems. We were still facing some challenges such as sludge removal and reduced capacity. And we're still, like Greg mentioned, we never really got back to pre-event conditions on turbidity, and we still have a little bit to go, but that defines the event being so prolonged and such an increase in magnitude in turbidity. I also described a little bit about the water quality that we experienced. Ulrich Water Treatment Plant, you had, not only was it a turbidity event, but it was a change in water chemistry. So, not only the turbidity increase in a rapid timeframe, but also the alkaline hardness as more rainwater was displacing the current lake system. The stabilization of that water didn't occur for about six days. So, the challenge here is that you're making chemical adjustments and trying to troubleshoot chemicals during a six-day period. So, not only are you faced with kind of an increase in solids to try to get rid of, but you're also trying to adjust your chemicals, such as ferric and lime, during that six-day period. So, it makes it, every time you try to do a test or come up with a recommendation, your water has already changed, and so you have to go back to the drawing board and make This describes the Ulrich finished water turbidity, and it is well below, above any of our treatment goals. Our plants typically produce, if you can see the kind of a near-flat line prior to the event, and trying to get it back to a normal operations, that probably represents less than the Point One NTU goal, and we achieve that just about every day of the year, except for during this event. We got as high as 3.5 NTU, and that was what was reported to the state. And these are four-hour samples, so every four hours, these were taken. We had, we take, grab samples every four hours, and that's what this represents.
I would add one other comment of kind of what's different for us today versus the past, and one of the challenges of the future is, if this event happened in 2002 or earlier, there is no boil water notice. That turbidity regulations have been tightening over time. So, the margin of error you have, or elbow room, so to speak, is getting narrower and narrower. And yet, we're faced with a future that climate change is driving more extreme weather events. And so, that is a real challenge for our utility and the entire industry, is how do you grapple with more extreme events in an environment where you have tighter and tighter regulations? And, you know, it's one of the things we're all going to have to work on together as we, as we work through climate change risk. Thank you, Rick.
Sure. The other graphic you see or slide is about the bacteriological water quality. I mentioned earlier in the slide presentation, there's two major components of the treatment process. one being disinfection, the other being particle removal. Throughout this entire event, we maintain strong disinfection process. And this kind of just represents a sample of the average disinfection residual throughout the distribution system was about 2.33 milligrams per liter, which is a healthy chlorine residual for the system. The minimum that we could, actually, the farthest reaches of our distribution system has to be above 0.5 milligrams per liter. So we knew that that was one of the things that we had control over, was the disinfection process. And that kind of led into making sure that we deactivated any harmful bacteria, either Giardia or viruses. We had a healthy disinfection and activation of the bacteria and viruses. In addition to that, we were required to not only maintain our bacteriological samples throughout the month, but also had to collect special samples. So through this process, we collected additional samples to ensure that we had a healthy disinfection and bacteriological sample results from the entire city system. Finally, this last slide is about the impact addressing zebra mussels. There were none. Zebra mussels kind of are a threat to impair kind of the withdrawal of water from our, from the lake through accumulation of the intake structures and piping. And none of the water treatment plants experienced any problems drawing water from the lake system during the event. Because they are filter feeders, zebra mussels prefer environments of less than 50 NTUs. So high turbidity probably had an adverse effect on them, so it probably harmed them. We do do periodic inspections of our intake structures. So that is one thing that we'll follow up with and make sure that there are no issues with zebra mussels as it relates to this event or any event, but just that we do periodically check our infrastructure. With that, I'll kind of leave it up for any questions that you may have.
Well, again, in watching it, I thought that the response was very quick. And I'm real pleased that you were able to resolve it as quickly as you did during the week. And I thought that the message that was being sent out to the public was consistent and strong and was reassuring. There were thousands of people, obviously, that were involved in the response, which was, I think, really effective, given the circumstances. I think it's good to take a look at this as you continue to with the outside study to see what we need to be doing to maintain resilience. There's one aspect of this, I don't think that's been discussed very much, that I think is real significant. And that is when the decision was being made, when you were making the decision that night or early in that morning about whether or not to issue the water boil notice, you were doing that before you were required to do it. And as it turned out, even though that happened over the weekend, it wasn't something that had to be done until Wednesday. And then you have a 24-hour period, so really Thursday, to do that. But you made the decision to go early. And a lot of the conversation in the community's been about that decision. Initially, it was, how could you make that decision when people didn't know about it? Because people were drinking water that morning when this was being discussed at 2:00 in the morning. And the fear was that people at 6:00 that morning or 8:00 were being put in danger because they might not have heard of the warning at that point in time. And I think it's important to note that no one was put in danger at that point because the announcement didn't have to be given at that point. But the real significance, I think, of making that water boil notice as early as you did is not the viruses or the Giardia or the reason why to boil water. It's that it got everybody's attention in a way that you would have not gotten people's attention if you had not done that. And probably the most immediate threat, as I understand it, that the city was facing at that point was the drop in the water production in the water reservoir. If we had dipped significantly or materially lower, but in the direction we were heading, we wouldn't have had fire flow in certain areas. We wouldn't have had the water in the pipes that we needed to have. You sent out an announcement on Saturday to tell people to start conserving water and to stop using water. And quite frankly, like a lot of announcements that come out of the city, it wasn't resulting in changed behaviors. And one of the things, I think, to take a look at is how you make that initial announcement as impactful as it needs to be to have an abrupt change in people's usage of water. What eventually and immediately caused that response in the community was coupling it with the water boil notice. Because soon as people looked at having to boil water, which eventually was required four days later, but when it was accompanied with that, people understood the severity of the moment. And then there was the dramatic reduction in water usage. And with the dramatic reduction in the water usage, then the water that was being produced, relatively little as it was, was able to enable us to build back up the water reserve so that we weren't in danger of losing fire flow or draining pipe systems that then needed recovery time in order to be able to refill and the potential for structural and other capital damage that was done. And I don't know if there's a way to get that announcement to be understood without an accompanying water boil notice. But I know that in the emergency situation we were in, it was coupling those two things that enabled the water response to happen. Leslie, and then Jimmy, and then Allison.
Actually, if there is some good news coming out of all of this, it would be the piece about the zebra mussels. So I was curious, any chance that the flood event diminished the numbers that have gotten into our local water supply and, or maybe diminished some, killed them off?
It probably didn't kill them all off, but hopefully it set them back a little. Anything that sets them back is good. We probably need to confer a little more watershed on kind of the habitat issues with that, but you're exactly right.
People may not know about the zebra mussels much, but I know that they've gotten into our Highland Lakes and down into Lake. Are they in Lake Austin?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah. And that's a huge problem.
We have seen them on water infrastructure, and we've taken some cleaning mechanisms already to them. So it'll be a long-term issue for us.
Yeah, thanks.
When I look at the chart, it's so, it's almost like a heart monitor, as much as it spikes. It doesn't really seem that there's that much reduction in water usage. Am I just missing it in the mess of the lines?
Yeah, this is instantaneous, so it's not, it doesn't give you a trend or feel. But there is a shift, a downward shift. Obviously, some of those represent spikes of morning spikes or evening spikes, the kind of diurnal spikes that you might have over the course of a day. But the immediate response that we've seen in the past is that a call for reduction usually results in using more water initially and then tapering off. And that's what you saw in the first large spike after the urgent call for water reduction. And then you, one of the things that we don't have on here was the watering schedule. Initially, that's how we had and tracked watering schedule to kind of predict what may happen in the next 12-hour shift, because we were operating on a 12-hour shift at the DOC, the Department Operations Center. So we would forecast what we would expect to see as far as water usage within the next 12 hours and 24. So trying to predict some of that water usage. And also targeting, one of the things, this is a roll-up of storage and water usage for the entire city. We actually divide the city into nine areas. So we're able to at least try to monitor usage throughout the city in kind of segregated segments, pressure zones. And so there were occasions where we targeted areas for water reduction, whether through our conservation team or through some of our apps for drop counter. So we did try to focus on areas that we thought that were using a little more water than normal, or at least maybe didn't get the right communication.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be interested in seeing, if not like a rolling average or some other version that helped smoothed out the spikes to get a better sense of how much water use actually did drop, to know what that impact was. The chart that really gets me is the one about the water flows from the Llano River. And I'm curious if you've done any kind of napkin math about, you know, if you had come back from the future and said, hey, we're about to have this thing happen. I need the city to spend X amount of dollars to be prepared. Do you know what that number might have been?
I'm not sure if I.
So if there was data that showed the Llano River was about to turn into Niagara Falls times four, and you looked at the capacity and you said, well, I think we're going to have a problem here. We need to expand XYZ, and it's going to cost $100 million, or $200 million, or $400 million. Have you done any napkin math on that?
Well, I think that's some of the things we're sorting out with our full after-action review is kind of some of those factors. I mean, part of it may not be like spending on a whole lot of new physical infrastructure. I think part of it is going to be different approaches to the chemicals that we use. We're probably going to have to add what are called polymers, which we have historically not used. They're more sensitive to deal with, but I think those are likely outcomes from this event. There'll be some investments we'll need to make for that, but it isn't like a make-a-plant-bigger kind of investment. I think storage is another consideration. And like our Water Forward program, or as we described in that, the Aqua for Storage and Recovery project is a project that would likely have important implications for us dealing with an upset event like this, in addition to droughts. I don't know, Rick, if you had some other kind of sense of that?
No, I think your touch on the storage will be evaluated, whether or not there are some improvements in storage in certain areas of town that we would benefit from. Obviously, some of the things that we could do is procedurally is relook at how we operate our system. And so those don't require a lot of investment, but require review of procedures and set points of how we store water throughout the system.
I think just in generally, the very atypical nature of this moment just makes me think that even if you had been able to do that, there would have been many voices in the community doubting that it would even be possible. And we may not have taken any necessary action or made the investment to do it. And, you know, there's a lot of armchair quarterbacking about what all of us do, both on the council and on staff. But I just think it's important to note that even if you had predicted it, it's very unlikely we would have believed you, that that type of event were even possible, given how much of an outlier it was to history. So I want to, I mean, and then as the mayor said, thank you all for the actions you took, for putting out the notice early, giving folks so much warning in advance that no one was put at risk, and then ultimately managing the system in such a way that I've not heard a single report of anyone falling ill or being otherwise harmed during this event. And speaking for at least the folks in my district who have spoken to me, I'm really proud of this community for stepping up to the challenge. And even during a very, you know, during early vote, when there's a lot of people talking about politics all at the same time, nobody seemed to be that particularly frustrated. They just kind of rolled with it, which, if that's not the most Austin thing, I think it just makes me proud of the city.
Allison.
I think our new reality is that climate change is going to create events that we have not anticipated. And it's incumbent on us to create an environment where the city can be resilient. And that's why that particular item is one of our strategic outcomes, our top 10 outcomes. And so I think this event should focus our attention on both what happens in the water area, but in other areas such as wildfire, where we are at risk to these events of climate change. First, I want to appreciate the quick response to our resolution and coming forward with the report. I think it's important for the public to have a better understanding of these events. So I appreciate this step, and I look forward to the written portion of this when it's ready. I wanted to dig into a little bit about the turbidity. So as I understand it, this was ultimately a turbidity event and the high levels of turbidity. You said something early in the presentation, though, that piqued my interest, which was that the folks who were drawing water from Lake Travis were not experiencing the same high levels of turbidity, and the difference was something like 20 to 400. And you mentioned that the flow was tremendous over the dam. But help me understand why, if the problem was the flooding from the Llano River, you wouldn't see turbidity levels elsewhere in Lake Travis of at least a higher magnitude than 20? I mean, is it just simply the flow levels that create that? Because if we want to understand under what conditions this would happen again, I think we have to understand some of those dynamics.
Let me clarify my comment. So Lake Travis did experience high turbidities in the 400 range. And our Hancock's plant, which draws water from Lake Travis, experienced those level of turbidities. It was really where you were located in Lake Travis. The utilities that draw from shallower bays, where the water kind of got isolated and it was more the traditional clear lake water, their turbidities never changed much. But the central riverbed, where we have deep-water intakes, that's where you saw the highest turbidities. So it just, it kind of goes to the nature of this event. I mean, you could be, in one part of Lake Travis was very stable, the other part of Lake Travis was very upset. I mean, you know, traditionally, deep-water intakes are what you want. And, you know, those are the last intakes to go dry during a drought. You know, we could draw water all the way down to the lakes going bone-dry, where shallow water intakes are subject to significant risk during times of drought. But in this case, it was a little bit of a curse, per se, that we had those deeper water intakes where more of the turbidity was located, both on Lake Travis and Lake Austin. Lake Austin, in essence, became the riverbed again. And all that turbidity was just flowing down Lake Austin. So let me clarify that. So, you know, it wasn't that Lake Travis was clear of this. It was really where you were located in the lake.
But, so most of our discussion, though, has been about how you would treat high levels of turbidity. Is there anything we can do to make sure that those high levels of turbidity are not there in the first place? We don't control the Llano River. I mean, you know, this, I'm assuming this is coming from debris and other things. How do we reduce that part of the equation, rather than just think about what chemicals we can add to our water to fix it after the fact?
I don't think you could control turbidities in a natural system like that. I mean, you could construct settling basins and other infrastructure to try to settle out water beforehand. That would be enormous undertaking. I think, you know, you kind of have to live, when you're a surface water utility, with some of this variability that you're dealing with. You know, one way, again, is storage. I'll go back to Aqua for Storage and Recovery. You know, when we have an ASR project in full production, we will be storing upwards of ultimately a year's worth of water, over 30 billion gallons of pretreated water. That water is safe from upset. There is no upsetting of that water. It's underground. So, you know, just imagine if you had an ASR project and you experienced an event like this, you would just start to draw water. That's drinking water quality that you're storing. It's stored already treated, and you bring it back into the system. It's unupsettable. I think that is a key climate adaptation. We've always thought of that more from a drought contingency perspective. But I think in future upsets like this, that would be the way to kind of bring more resiliency to our system there. Rick, I don't know if you had some comments to?
Obviously, one of the strategies that we did ultimately perform was to kind of reduce the rate of production. So to kind of, to go through this event and reduce some of the, not only sedimentation process, bring on more pieces of equipment online, but to flow through less through the plants. It's kind of like you derated the plant. That was something that you can kind of live through either a day or two. Those are things that we'll evaluate is how much water do we need to produce? And maybe even look at some are deferred, because we were in deferred, defer some of the maintenance, you know, outside of this event, is we had some maintenance activities that kind of took some capacity offline. So we have to adapt to how we do maintenance, how we look at our plant production, how we store water, in addition to the treatment of our water. So we have multiple strategies that we can look at that doesn't involve a large capital investment at this point in time to adapt to these kind of once-in-a-lifetime events. That essentially, throughout my 23 years, I've never experienced something of this magnitude, so.
We hope it's a once-in-a-lifetime event. Let me ask my question another way, because I'm trying to understand if there's anything upstream we need to be doing to help us in the future. I understand that we are focused on what we control as a city, but... I understand that we are focused on what we control as a city, but looking ahead, are there things that need to be happening at a regional or state level in the management of the waterways or in other aspects that would help us be resilient over time? Because you've mostly focused on what Austin Water can do, you know, after the dam and, you know, in our treatment plants. And I'm trying to understand, is there anything upstream that needs to happen? You know, this debris came from somewhere. Is there, you know, anything that we need to be looking at? I understand you're saying that one thing we could do would be really expensive, but is there anything else that we need to be thinking about on that level?
Well, I think, you know, seeing the Hill Country develop is, you know, something that we would want to be mindful of. You know, I think, you know, faster runoff rates, more scouring of the river, you know, those are potential issues to consider. I mean, these are gargantuan watersheds, though. I mean, you know, millions and millions of acres of land. I don't know if you could materially impact how turbidity levels would perform over that big of a watershed. I think, in part, this is experience, working with LCPA, we've also come to understand that the Lano River has some unique qualities to it in terms of the soils because of the Lano uplift and its ancient rock that has frayed a lot, and there's a lot more clay and clay-like soil structures in the Lano County area than other parts of the Hill Country. And that was another contributing factor why this flood was so disruptive. The Lano River doesn't flood anywhere near as much, and then the last major flood was probably in the very early 1990s. But when it does, it has a different quality to it in terms of the colloidal particles that are hard to settle out. So, I think that that's another understanding for us, is, you know, maybe us understanding and working with LCPA more on different floods and how they impact the system differently. That is, is one of the lessons I think we could, we can apply better.
I have one more question and one comment. With all of this turbidity entering into Lake Austin, are there any plans to be draining Lake Austin sooner than planned, or is there a need for that at all? I don't understand if that water, the sediment settled in Lake Austin and may be creating problems, or if that's something that we need to be considering.
I don't believe so. You mean like a dredging kind of operation? No, I don't believe that, and LCPA has evaluated that, and they model how much sedimentation is occurring in the lake and how that is impacting overall lake storage. And I think it's a very manageable risk for them. I can't speak definitively to it. I think, you know, this kind of an event, the velocity of the water, the bulk of that, of that sediment and turbidity is carried downstream as that image showed in the satellite, and is probably adding to the bays in LCPA's Matagorda Bay is where that is going to be settling out more, not as much in Lake Travis.
Okay, I appreciate this report. I did want to ask as a follow-up, city manager, and this is kind of a little bit tangential, but I think it's an appropriate time to ask for it, is if we can get a memo on the current state of zebra mussels in our waterway and what steps we're taking to address those issues, rather than having to do an IFC or request that. I think that would be useful. Thank you.
Mayor Council, again, really appreciate this opportunity to do a deeper dive into what occurred with our water treatment system during the historic flooding event. This is an unprecedented, this has been an unprecedented event for our community, and I just want to commend the work of our staff and our community to be able to come together and really work through this so we can get out the other end and not have any health effects from it. I mean, that was our biggest concern all along, is the safety of our community. And so, I know that this isn't the end of that discussion. I'm really optimistic and appreciative of the council's unanimous support for the Water Forward Plan that happened last council cycle, and look forward to continuing to discuss how we can prevent these in the future. We heard many times on the dais right now that this, the climate change, the things that we are seeing, the factors that we're seeing in our environment aren't going away, and they are getting more and more dramatic, and we need to be prepared and more resilient in the future. So, I thank each of you for your support for staff and the community during this time, and I look forward to continuing to work with you in the future.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Houston.
Thank you. Manager Quonk, if the state gets any kind of money from the federal government regarding the flooding, can we apply for some of that to cover some of our costs?
Councilmember, absolutely. And so, what we had done when we declared it flooding disaster, I believe, it was a disaster declaration that the mayor declared, that allows us to then apply for that state federal, or that federal assistance.
Thank you. And the last thing I want to say to Director Mazerow, I think your calmness, and of course, the city manager and the mayor's calmness as well, but you're calm most of the time. I've never seen you get very flustered. You were there on the edge for a moment.
Yeah, part of me on the inside was pretty flustered.
But nobody could tell on the outside, and I think that helped keep everybody's level, most people, I can't say everybody, but most people's level of comfort, that the city was doing the best that they could do with the amazing amount of water that was coming in and the need to be able to push it out. So, I appreciate you and your staff for all the work they did over those several days.
And councilmember, you know I have a good woman that, behind me, and that's why I'm so calm, so, yeah, that's what it is.
Your eyes got pretty big, though. All right, thank you very much.